Good evening and welcome to tonight's work session. Today is Tuesday, March the 15th, 2022, times now 5:00 p.m. The work session of the City Council will now come to work. We have one item tonight, and that is on the Trinidad depot sale and highway funding. And that is quite a list of items. I don't think we're going to get into all of them. That's quite an extensive list of items. The first item, of course, on there is going to be the Trinidad depot. I'm sorry about that. Now that's on the regularly. Oh, so it's a grab. Yeah, this is just. There's no question. So this meeting will go on for 45 minutes, at which time we'll shut it down because we need to get ready to go into our regular sessions at 6:00 p.m. Just let everybody know, tonight, there will be no decisions or consensus on moving forward with this. I know there's one item on there that's of importance, but that's something that will have to be taken up with, not to take it up with Mr. Valentine as to how to move forward with it. So I guess with that, let's go ahead and get started. I think Mr. Selface, you want to begin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Trinidad City Council. And we have a PowerPoint, and I understand Audra has it. And.
Can you hear us? What the heck's going on? Tefei, can you hear us?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good, thank you. Audra, do you have the PowerPoint for Mr. Pace? Sorry about that. Our first time on Zoom.
I figured out that you were on Zoom. Yeah, thank you guys very much. And really, what we want to bring up is a number of items that the city's been leaning on and grateful for the city's leadership. And we just want to support and play a supporting role. You guys, you guys are the head chefs. We're the sous chefs, just supporting in the kitchen, you know, so that we can play a supporting role. And a number of us, we sent the letter back in January, and on the second slide, you can see that there. And I think Carlos is going to help lead a lot of this discussion as well. I'm just going to kick it off here, Carlos Lopez. And this is a follow-up to this letter, and we appreciate the openness and gratitude to invite us in to your meeting. Here's Carlos. And, you know, a little background on myself, I'm a former state rep and county commissioner in Pueblo. I was the minority leader in the State House. And I served as a co-chair of Governor Polis's Transition Committee. And I oversaw the transportation and the local government pieces of the Transition Committee. So these are some of the areas that are of interest to me. Of course, I've served on the Front Range Rail District with Mayor Rico, and hopefully we'll both be serving on the new district, hopefully both appointed by the governor in the next couple of weeks here. And yeah, joined by Carlos, do you have anything here?
Yes, hello council staff, people in the gallery. What we're trying to promote here is just full benefits of what we already started. And I say "we" because I was a hopeful collective of us years ago when we put together the Comprehensive Plan. That was our guidepost. We spent, you know, a substantial amount of money to give us a good, healthy guide for this slow growth that we had all intended for. And I think now we have something tangible with financial resources from the federal government, the state government, to actually see this through to fruition. We had these discussions. Now it's time to move, because there's a lot of resources out there that I don't want to leave on the table for our community. And I think it really starts with having transportation discussions in a new capacity, especially with the way things are going with gas prices. People are going to be using more and more mass transit systems to alleviate those costs on them and their families. And as a result, it also opens up this other portal for Trinidad. So we have the train coming in, and I think we've definitely seen the benefits of the Comedy Fest utilizing this train coming here, bringing people from Chicago and L.A. right here to Trinidad. At Lee and I's business, we see people coming through that are meeting in Trinidad from different portals, not for comedy, just for a family reunion. So I think that to have a good facility where we could have both a train, bus, maybe even a Uber of sorts, taxicab, if we used to with the yellow cab up on First and Convent, we can reinvigorate Trinidad again. And so those old days that I think that other people used to talk about, but those before my time, they can happen again. So anyway, we're going to proceed with this discussion, and thank you for your time.
Thanks. And for the agenda, Depot Hall Multimodal Interpretive Center, I'm sort of planning on five to 10 minutes there, and then Downtown Fisher Peace Trail, then maybe about 20 minutes, and then Traffic Study and Funding Need, maybe five minutes, just to give you an idea of how much time we plan.
What I like to do is take each one individually and then ask you questions from the council, and then we'll see if there's time to move on to the other.
Sounds good. So we'll start with the Depot Hall. We can go on to the next slide here. And I love this photo, and we have another photo later in here, of the old, original Depot Hall where the train station is located. And it's such a great location on the river. And as far as connectivity in Trinidad, it's a great spot for connectivity to downtown as well, right off the highway. There's a lot of parking. You can easily get to downtown. And the idea that the City Council and the Comprehensive Plan was promoted previously is a multimodal center, it's something that, you know, this letter that we sent, we referenced as a multimodal center. We said it could also be an outdoor direct interpretive center, all located at one structure at the Amtrak station. And a lot of communities are doing these multimodal centers that serve as a bus停stop, as the local transit center, and in this case, as an Amtrak stop as well. And it's consistent with the work already being done that Mayor Rico's been leaning on with a warming shelter, with Amtrak, and with the state, because you're going to need a warming shelter even if you have a depot hall, because sometimes the trains are going to come in late, or late at night, and you're going to need a place for people to stay warm, even if you have a depot hall, because it won't be open 24 hours a day. So on to the next slide here. This slide highlights that Front Range Passenger Rail is coming. You can see the green circles here on Pueblo and Colorado Springs. These two green circles are identifying stationary planning for new depots that are coming to Colorado Springs and Pueblo. And these stationary plans are being driven by the local governments in Colorado Springs and in Pueblo. And Colorado Springs, it's the Colorado Springs City Council and Pueblo. It's the Board of County Commissioners, but they've already started identifying locations. And some of the needs for engineering, getting in and out to these potential depot halls. What you don't see is a similar circle than Trinidad, and even though it's on the Comprehensive Plan, obviously Trinidad is going to be part of Front Range Rail, and Trinidad is already a part of the Southwest Chief. We can go on to the next slide. This is pretty exciting, and the potential model for Trinidad is La Hanta, has just been approved by CDOT for $4 million for their multimodal transit center located on their Southwest Chief stop. The same concept that Trinidad's been behind in the Comprehensive Plan. And when the TPR gets together next week, the Transportation Planning Region gets together next week, there'll be a recommendation to approve this $4 million. And this is the type of vision that could happen in Trinidad as well. On to the next slide here. I wanted to point out the Comprehensive Plan, everyone to point out the Comprehensive Plan adopted in 2017, and Carlos referenced it earlier. It was a long process, and the city invested a lot of time and resources and energy in the Comprehensive Plan. And you can notice right on the right side is that one of the goals, goal TC2, Develop an Efficient Multimodal Transportation System that Supports Community Livability. There's a lot of work in the Comprehensive Plan that the city has endorsed around multimodal center. And so, you know, we just want to continue the great work that you and the city has been doing for years already. And on to the next slide. Why is it all relevant right now, and the timing is right right now? That's because of COVID, it's because of the silly money coming out of Washington, D.C. We've all seen, we've all seen all of the expenditures coming. Those of us who were in government back in 2008, 2009, 2010, we saw the same thing back then, when the economy tanked, the governments, state and federal, started throwing money at some of the problems to try to stimulate economic growth. This money's going to be around for a couple of years, and then it's going to go away. But right now, all of the transportation planning regions, including the South Central, are going through a new tenure rewrite. There is new funding in the state under Senate Bill 260. There is new dollars from the federal infrastructure bill, in fact, for rail, $66 billion set aside for rail. And then new greenhouse rulemaking, and the state Transportation Commission has adopted new greenhouse pollution reduction rules. And so there are specifically new dollars to encourage multimodal projects. And there's a number of instruments that are available right now that have good funding in them, multimodal transportation mitigation option funds, FTA funding streams, and of course, the COVID relief and the infrastructure package. So the timing is right to develop the city's plan. We can move on to the next slide. And this is the last slide on the multimodal depot concept. Trinidad has been planning for multimodal, and it's part of the Comprehensive Plan since 2017. There's a need for current city planning efforts to continue to connect the dots, and as we think about CDOT and all the TPR's transportation regions now rewriting the 10-year plans, they're rewriting them because of extra money. And so our recommendations and next steps is just have City Council continue the support of a multimodal center. And timing is right right now for the city to draft a letter to CDOT and TPR requesting to include the Depot Hall Multimodal Center on the 10-year priority list at the South Central TPR meeting taking place next week, March 24th, at 10:00 a.m. in Walsenburg. Councilor Williamson is the city's representative at that meeting. And I have full confidence that if Trinidad and Los Angeles officials said they want it on the 10-year list, it gets on the 10-year list. I think that would happen. And then after inclusion on the 10-year priority list, and then it's planned to collaborate with CDOT Region 2 Transit Staff to identify state and federal planning and construction grants for this concept. Jack Guthrie is the Region 2 Transit Director, and very, very easy to work with, a nice guy, and would be a person who'd be a great resource. And this is another photo of the old train station here in Trinidad. So that wraps up the multimodal piece here. I'm happy to answer any questions.
We get some questions from council, Mr. Pace.
Mr. Pace, what is the difference between intermodal transportation and multimodal transportation? Is it in the contract?
Intermodal? You know, I'm not quite sure. I have to look that up. I mean, the concept between multimodal is having multiple means of transportation, usually transit-based, all coming into one spot, that's sort of the hub. Intermodal is connectivity between different forms of transportation, I believe.
So is one entity responsible for a certain thing?
I believe so. Yeah, I'd have to look it up and get back to you.
Do you have any questions? Scotty. What entity do you all represent?
Well, we're all representing different entities. In this case, we started getting together in the fall and to draft this letter. And so we don't really have an entity title for the entire group of us. You know, I'll tell you that I work with Trinidad Development. I also work with Dr. Malik Assam, but, you know, my interest in passenger rail comes from my interest in passenger rail, and that's not a big gig.
How much work has your group done on this? Just this portion?
I would say quite a bit, because we're trying to utilize collective knowledge from historical data that we've had here in Trinidad. I mean, a lot of us are here in Trinidad. I mean, I have a vested interest now, being a business owner, no doubt. I want to see people coming into our downtown area, walking around, eating at our restaurants, shopping in our more and more evolving shops that are coming up. I think that it has been taking us a little bit of time, but yet because of the wealth of knowledge that we have, kind of coalesced, it's been able to, well, look at the presentation. I'm very proud to stand behind this presentation. I'm from Trinidad, I'm a miner. So I see the value in this, and especially now that we have new people coming to our community. My wife's from Atlanta. She took a risk coming out here, and she's like, Trinidad's my new home. And a lot of other people are doing the same, and we want to make sure that we give them the toolset, so that way they can be successful too.
How much input has your group gotten from city staff on what you've done so far? Have you worked with city staff at all on this?
On this first portion, I don't believe so.
You know, I can say I've been, you know, working on city staff, talking about multimodal center in Trinidad for probably seven years. You know, there was an attempt years back to try to bring in a warming shelter and do something multimodal. You know, we sent the letter in January on this particular piece, and we are only supporters of the city's Comprehensive Plan.
Are you willing, if this goes, if the city gives you blessings for this project, would you be willing to work under the guidance of city staff?
Absolutely.
Because I'll tell you, this area, in the regular session, after this session, we're talking about the Railway Foundation and the development of the river. And as you can see, that your transportation center is right smack in the middle of that area. I just want to reiterate that how important it is that if this continues and council votes to support this, that you work with city staff so we can get a completed project.
I probably call Mike more than he wants me to.
He can say anything, so that's good.
You know what? I think I did misspeak a moment ago, because I forgot, Mike was actually on a call with Rick Klein from La Huta recently about multimodal to gain more information about how they were able to acquire these dollar funds for that $4 million. And I apologize for that, Mike. We've just been working so hard. But yes, we have integrated him onto this portion of it. On the next portion of our discussion, we have the city planner involved. So we have been trying to make sure that we're not stepping onto those, we're walking together in, you know, similar shoes.
Okay. I have no further questions.
You know, I don't have really much to add to what Karen said there, except that, you know, I was on a council even before we made the plan, and we were working on this multi. So we've been working on it for quite a while, it just hasn't been over the last few years. And I think it's great, but I think we all need to work together with the city and everything else and go from there. And thank you for the work that you guys have been doing and enthusiasm to try to get things going. Other than that, that's all I have.
Ms. Ogletree, are you with us tonight?
I am.
Do you have any questions?
I am in Georgia right now, and I just had an ex-fibby guy here from La Huta, which was very fun. My questions are more about the practicalities of where it seems as though you're suggesting that this depot hall and multimodal center would be located. Do you have a square footage that you think would be necessary to meet all the needs that you talked about, and a budget of what you think that would cost? Because that, the area where this facility was before obviously has a freeway over it, and there's not a lot of land there, so I'm just wondering how you thought that through.
So, you know, I priced out moving the platform. Amtrak said they wanted at least $3 million to move it. And so I think it makes it almost impractical to move the platform. They, you know, they just built it, you know, I don't know, probably five, six years ago. And they said they want their money back, it was relocated anywhere else. I was just, I was just curious. So I think this, you know, somewhere in this general vicinity, as far as price tag, I think the vision of what this can be needs to be driven by the community. And so, you know, what type of amenities, what type of transit options, what type of other activities, I think that should be community-driven, and that can be done in the planning process. You know, and I, right now, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of planning grant dollars that are available, and I think, you know, through a community-wide planning process, you could really hone in on exactly what it looks like.
To kind of step on that one, remember, a while back, we had a lot of money that was supposed to be given to us from CDOT for a facility, and it never came to be because we had an issue with COG and trying to find someone to man the facility. And then just, we left money on the table. And now that there's money back on the table again for a development phase where we can actually put out something and do some civil engineering and find out where we can put a facility in that, maybe that rocky area just a little bit going towards College Street. That would be a place to start. You also have ample amount of parking, so if you do have the bus depot there, they have places to turn around and have a safe maneuverable area for people to come, well, to engage the bus. Because right now, to be honest, if you're on bus, you're probably going to have a hard time getting up to 11:00 to get on the bus, because you're probably on foot. So having a centralized location downtown not only is more amenable to people on foot traffic, but also it helps people that are in businesses downtown, because then they're probably going to go and walk towards, you know, the grill and have a bite to eat, or they're going to walk to the new cafe and get something there, or whatever. The whole New La Berta District is coming in, which is going to have a myriad of shops. And we're just trying to promote the downtown area. So having a functional facility like this is critical, and in terms of what it's going to be designed, that's to be determined. I mean, we're just the vision group here, I think, trying to help grease your wheels so that way you can say, yes, this is supported. I mean, look how full this gallery is for a work session. And they know that all three of these topics are on here, so it's well-supported. Can I get a show of hands, who would like this idea?
That's not necessary, Dan.
I was told that we're running long here, and we should move on to the trails piece.
Does Ms. Ogletree have any other questions?
The only other question was, we recently got feedback from our first, from the traffic study that we're doing with CDOT. Have you considered what their recommendations are in taking this through at all?
Yeah, so if we have time at the end, we'll touch a little bit on the traffic study, but they are going to reference a need for a multimodal center, and the fact that the Comprehensive Plan has considered it.
Okay, thank you.
The questions I have, and I've seen the conceptual drawing of that, of the depot, where it would be, and I had a little discussion with Mr. Valentine, and he was talking about a 30-wide building, I guess that's the thought, it would have to be at least 30 feet wide. And of course, the length is, you know, flexible, I guess. The big thing is, is I think you were concerned, is there enough room there? And that was the problem that we came up with. And the other thing is, from the, where the base is right now that Amtrak owns to where CDOT owns, who owns that property in there? That's the other thing. Who owns that property? Is it BNSF? Is it Amtrak? Is it CDOT? Is it the city? Do we know?
Well, and we were talking with Rick the other day, and he was saying one of the big hurdles will be dealing with BNSF on Friday, and he's working on that right now in La Huta. You know, I think it's sort of premature to start getting into exactly, exact layout and design, and I think when you go through a planning process, that all of those specifics will be hashed out.
But it's good, at least bring up the question. It has plenty of time, so that we know what questions are coming at us.
I agree.
We don't know. The other thing that I'm concerned about is, like I said, and, you know, you've heard me, I've been working on this warming shelter now for a year with Amtrak and CDOT. And last fall, I think they agreed to $368,000. Like you said earlier, there was some money that was lost because of whatever reason back in 2014 or 2015. I just don't want to see where the state will say, okay, they want this warming shelter, but now they want this. And I just don't want them to think that we are, we don't know what we want, that we want, you know, is this part of it? Like I said, if warming shelter, I think is a good idea along with it. So I just want to make sure that we don't lose that $368,000 or whatever that dollar amount is. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I agree completely. You know, I had an informal conversation with David Singer yesterday, and I said, hey, any push for a depot hall does not mainly want to stop the warming shelter. Go Polis, we need it in Wincourt for a decade. That was an off-the-record informal conversation. But I think, you know, being clear about that, and so everyone knows that there's no intention to stop the work that's already happening, and you've done really great work on that, for sure.
Yeah, that's the big thing, because one of the things that I've been getting hammered on by some of the constituents that use Amtrak, you know, I'm sitting in my car freezing my butt or roasting, you know, that's the thing that they're concerned about, and they want to have someplace where they can at least get out there, you know, out of their vehicles. Like, I know that, you know, you have, the other thing I was going to say, how much money under SB 260 is there?
You know, I don't have that on me, I'm sorry.
And I know that that $66 billion is that infrastructure bill for rail, and we'll see how that, and I think there's $2.3 or $2.4 billion of that's supposed to come to Colorado from that, let's see how that works out. The big thing is, and I think you brought it up in a little bit, some of your information, some of the funding that has been put out by the, for TPR is only for this area, is only $5 million. So it's going to be a heck of a lot more money, of course, we've got to afford it over a period of five or 10 year plan. This $5 million, as you know, doesn't, will not go very far. Any thoughts on that?
Well, you know, I think the asking to put it on the 10-year list means that it gets in the priority list for funding. You know, it's crazy money time right now, and I think getting it listed is just the first step, and TPR will be voting next week on what to include on the 10-year list. There's a lot more competition for the highway dollars in this region than there are for the transit dollars.
And to add to that, say if we change our mind, council changes their minds on what they want to do, I'd rather us be on that 10-year list and then back away versus not being able to play ball at all.
Well, the thing, Potter, is really concerning, as you know, Sal, is that we keep talking about the Front Range Passenger Rail coming through this area instead of having to reroute through, you know, just for audiences' information, one thing that I've been impressing upon as being involved with, the commission, currently, current commission. Right now, Amtrak comes from the East Coast and to La Jolla, and then, of course, the plan is to go through the two-car service in the Pueblo and then up north. Now, we know that the people up north is going to be where the greater ridership Now, we know that the people up north are, is gonna be where the greater ridership is. So, let's say they want to go to the east coast, that's the, the big, uh, that's the, the best way to get their stuff, go to Pueblo and then to Lahana and then the east. But let's say they want to go to the west coast. So, currently, the way it would be is they would have to come from Denver, Colorado Springs, Pueblo, Lahana, back to Trinidad. So, that would be something that if, if someone out of Colorado Springs or Denver wants to go to, uh, the west coast, like I said, uh, it would really not be beneficial, because it would probably add six, seven hours to the, to the trip. So, that's something that I've been working on with you guys, as you all know, I've been pushing for, to eventually have a straight run-through from Pueblo, Walsenburg, and Trinidad, because it makes more sense. So, I think that's the push that we need to have, so, uh, that's why I say that the representation that we need to have going forward with this new district is really gonna be critical.
So, if this is a good segue, we can move on to the next portion, which is the trails, uh, that we're trying to work on here in the community. One of which, of course, is ultimately to have a trail with foot access or bicycle access directly to Fisher's Peak State Park. That's gonna take a lot of time.
And I interrupted just one minute, and one thing that I wanted to mention is, before we get started, is that I, you know, I know that there's that, there's a big push to try and get that done, and wanted to get that done. But I think that is going to be fleshed out pretty heavily when we meet with the county on the 11th, right, Mr. Valentine?
Um, yes.
Because we're gonna have a meeting with the county, and we're gonna have an in-depth conversation about, because there is that grant that we have received, because I know you're talking about an additional funding. I'm not sure if the tax we needed or not, because we already have this $300,000 grant that we already have already received.
So, I'm sorry when you say flesh it out, or?
Well, flesh it out at that meeting, I think. One quick present which you guys have.
Yeah, maybe we can give you some other information, and maybe that's not on your mind. If we can go to the next slide, please. So, here we have the 2015 master plan and overview, implementation database manual, uh, portions of it, that we have been working with Sky Coleman to base our ideas and portray off of something that was already done seven years ago. The groundwork and the light work was already made, and what we're doing is just working with it. And in order to keep things going smoothly, we think that phases of getting further and further south, and around the community for access for different parts of the community is pivotal. So, there used to be all these sidewalks that had stairs going up to different neighborhoods in Trinidad. You remember those, Mr. Shu?
Yeah.
You don't use them anymore, do you?
No.
Where are they?
They're buried.
Exactly. And that was the great thing about being a young person in Trinidad, I was able to go up and down those stairs and access different parts easily on foot. And I think that's a key thing for the quality of life that we have always advocated for, making us a viable community for others to come and explore, move to, recreate, spend money, build our tax revenue base. So, what we have done is just basically gone with what has already been produced.
If we could, if we could move to the next.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, you're good.
Yeah, next slide, maybe skip two ahead.
Sorry about that. So, what we are doing is, we're working with, like I said, Sky Coleman, and if it's possible, I would like to invite Mr. Coleman to come up here, because he has been critical with helping us with the, the mapping on this. It is part of the comprehensive plan, which is in the further pages under our goals. If you go up to the next slide, please, whoever's controlling that. So, here, from the 2017 comprehensive plan, we're working in step with what had been produced with the 2015 master trails plan. It's listed right here under goal RTCR dash two. What we had hoped for in the visioning for what we're calling Trinidad to go with the slow growth that we had proposed years ago. And now, oh, here we are. Next slide, please. Oh, si- I'm sorry.
It's okay. Well, we can all stand here together. Thanks, everybody, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for listening to us through this and making a special session for it. Um, hashtag Trinidad Trail, it would be a, such a marketing thing for downtown Trinidad or economic development, um, with Sky's help and with Lee and Carlos's help and Tom Cressett in that meeting too. We have devised numerous ways from the 2015 plan adding to it, so that we can have a trail from downtown Trinidad to go up there. And I know we don't know which way that will be, and there's lots of different ways that can go up there, but, um, when you think of the impact of connecting downtown Trinidad to Fisher's Peak, we love Fisher's Peak Park, we love Trinidad State Park, but Trinidad State Park has never plummeted people going from the park directly to Trinidad and vice versa. Um, they're, they're, they're outside the city limits, it's, um, it, it's never worked that way. There's so many communities like Glenwood Springs, Manitou Springs, from Manitou Springs, any of that you know there, their population's only about 5,000 people. They built their incline there, and that's really what started driving it. Then people said, wow, this is great, so we went ahead and did the Cot railroad. Um, Steamboat Springs, um, Colorado Springs even has a few of them that go into their state park areas up there. Um, yeah, I, I foresee in the future, us in national magazines, like we have started to do in some of them, Mayor, you're familiar with, and, and through the tourism department, we have done national ads about, uh, outdoor recreation in this area, and I see hashtag Appalachian Trail, hashtag Oregon Trail, hashtag Trinidad Trail. It becomes a pilgrimage. So many people at certain stages in their life decide they want to do that pilgrimage, and that can be something that doesn't need to have people walking, uh, stamping being any part of it, you know, it's an ordinary habit in our downtown area. Um, uh, Sky had brought up a few which were really wonderful. The Boston Trail, it starts downtown Boston, so if we could have something that starts down, you get to the very top and there's some monument there, you get, you get somewhere at, when all those plans get placed, and there's a marker there, and you can take your picture in it, hashtag Trinidad Trail, I will give you a free hotel room, okay? So, it becomes a very big marketing thing, you don't have to have people stamp it. Some people say, oh, you're just gonna have an opening? It, it is, it's just a path opening. If you go to Trinidad State, like, like right now, right by Coke Dome on the south side, there's an opening that you can fully drive in. If you go on the east side, there's an opening that you can fully drive in, those are not stacked areas. And so, this is not asking for that, this is not asking for cars to go up there through it, this is a trail. This is a trail that has helped so many, so many towns that have been helped by it. Um, we see people all the time that say, um, yeah, I drove through Trinidad on the way to Santa Fe, you know? And it's really painful, because, you know, we have so much to offer down here, and you see small towns like Breckenridge and Crested Butte and Vale and the ski resorts and all those places that people come through from Texas or from the south, and that's, that's the places they, they go. And so, this allows people to get a couple more, a, a couple more days in their trip coming or going, or not to make such a big trip and drive all the way up to Vale, but just stop here in Trinidad. Economic development, all those places that I talked about, Manitou, Crested Butte, all those places, they are driven strictly by their outdoor recreation that really built up those towns completely. And so, you know, from a tourism point of view, it is, uh, you know, it bases our, our recreation. If you think of downtown, you say all the restaurants, uh, places to stay, bed and breakfasts, museums, art galleries, those are all the tourism-related businesses, that's 90% of our downtown area. And this January was a really horrible, hard part for so many of the businesses in the downtown Trinidad area. You know, this is give something that 12 months a year you could do, depending on if you want to do it with, uh, snowshoes, shoes on, or if you want to do it, you know, and backpack it. But this is a, a major, uh, a, a major plan that we would all work on together in partnerships that would do nothing but help the city of Trinidad. Really excited about those stairways, and I, I found, uh, the one at the end of Commercial Street where that just goes up there, and you start to visualize what that would be like. And, you know, it's just an exciting thing, you don't have to stamp it, you don't have to air-condition it, you don't have to heat it, you don't have to put people on it, it's there, it's going, it's for us, it doesn't matter if, we, we love the coal mine reopening, we love all the big business here, but, you know, we're at whim if they, if they're closed. And all of us that have been here, grew up here, been here, I've had property here for 40 years, lived here for 30 years, all of those that have done that, we have seen the boom and bust, we have seen the times that the coal mines have closed, or the energy businesses have come out and go. And instead, this wouldn't be, we would finally be claimed a mountain town. You know, for the longest time, I've been saying, you know, we need an Eiffel Tower or something big downtown that we can draw people to 12 months a year. The Eiffel Tower, we have the Eiffel Tower, it's Fisher's Peak, right? And it makes us become a mountain town, and it brings it in, because people are going through here because they don't feel like they're going to a mountain town. And a lot of our visitors from Texas, that's what they're looking for, they're looking for the mountain experience, they're looking to, to, to go to Colorado, that's what Colorado's about, it's the flag of the outdoor. So, thanks, guys, for listening to me. And I, I really, you know, anything that you know, you, you need, of course, I would always work with the city, but I think for us to get on a path, I think that people excited about the diversity of the downtown area and helping something economic development grow, all, all these, all these people that are moving in, our restaurants in town now are better than ever. We have such great competition with Sunset, and we have All Max, and we have so many great places that have opened up here, but they need that economic impact, they need those people. Our residents don't go out to eat seven days a week, we need that economic impact, we need that Eiffel Tower downtown.
Do you have anything else that you need to add?
Yes, for this portion, uh, pardon me.
We got about four minutes.
I'm aware, thank you. So, if we can move on forward to the slide that says Trinidad Trails Plan, and this is what I would like to ask Mr. Sky Coleman to come up, please. Sky, are you there? Again, we have been working with some city staff to make sure that we're not, uh, doing something erroneous, and if you could address these maps that you have, uh, prepared, I would appreciate it.
I saw this page, the next page, I've been hearing rumors, uh, through the grapevine that these guys were talking about a trail off of Garfield, and, um, I was like, well, what does that mean? So, I invented a thing, I just put it on the map. And what was interesting is that when we, when we kind of put on the map what, um, what ideas they were thinking about and what they wanted to propose, and if you can see a little bit better on the next page, um, it's, it's some very small amendments to what's already in our trail and Greenway's master plan. Um, on the Reservoir Hill area, uh, really what, what's being proposed in addition to what, um, already exists is a trail to the top and then some connectivity through the side streets that connect to Garfield, as well as what Sky mentioned, marking the sidewalks from the street up, so that you, uh, know how to get to the trailhead when you're, um, when you're in town. So, if you follow the content down, you could say, let's say, put a plaque on the sidewalk at, um, at the Miners Memorial Park, and just follow the signs all the way up to there.
And to just inject just a little bit there, think about how that would be exciting in our downtown sidewalks, to have maybe like some sort of an emblem or a piece of pottery that, that whatever local artists have made that's in the ground that says Fisher's Peak Trail this direction, or you're at the corner and it tells you to turn this way. And so, even if you're not taking the trail, or didn't know about the trail, all of a sudden you find out that Trinidad has this trail that goes up there.
And so, um, so, so, I, I just helped them put these maps together, and I think what they show is that what's, what's, what they're asking us for is to basically follow the plan that we had gathered in 2017, like in 2015, and, um, and maybe with a few little additions. Uh, if we go south towards Fisher's Peak, there was a couple little connectors between the proposed, uh, trails and the plan, and what that would do is it would, it would create a couple loop trails. So, you could do a three-mile loop, or a eight-mile loop, or a 10-mile loop, um, and that would just, um, make it, even if it never actually reached Fisher's Peak State Park, we create a series of loops going out in that direction, uh, that people could use afterward or for different levels of recreation. So, I think, um, you know, as we were talking about connecting to Fisher's Peak, if we did it in phases, um, in this sort of series of loops, that could be a, a phased approach to getting, uh, getting towards more of the recreational action.
Okay. I just want to point out the, the request, if we can go to the next slide, um, actually, uh, we'll go two slides forward, just so that we can wrap up this section here. You know, the, the next steps, um, City Council can take a position and support additional trail access points consistent with the 2015, uh, uh, plan and the 2017 comp plan, um, reference of additional trail access points. We put this in our letter to you in, in January, in CPW, CPW master plan for Fisher's Peak, and we've received verbal confirmation of this, that it can happen in CP, from CPW and the master plan. And then the next two steps will just take, uh, leader, you know, someone who's taken the lead from the city, conducting a study of alternative trail access points to Fisher's Peak State Park from downtown, and this would include survey work, engineering work, outreach to, uh, private landowners, as well as runaway, uh, research. Um, and CPW said this is important to do, led by the community, but led by you, by us, by those of us in the room from Trinidad, to, to work with CPW to say where, where we want additional access points, and then, uh, apply for state and federal funding to plan and build out trail, uh, local trail connections to Fisher's Peak, and potentially even working with Trinidad State College Trails Programs, really setting up a concept.
Okay, let's go ahead and wrap up.
Yeah, one last thing I'd like to add, you have people here that want to help.
I do, it's obvious.
For free, there's a group, uh, there's a group called the Trinidad Trails Alliance, which has been formed here. These people want to see these things happen, and they're willing to be boots on the ground and help out, whether it's through maintenance or building, you have a coalition that's willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you guys for coming here, everyone here that's here tonight, and just want to say, I do know that there's one priority about the, uh, next week's TPR meeting, I'll take that up with Mr. Valentine, um, in the next day or so, and see what we do with that, if we bring that as a proposal next week, uh, we'll do that. As far as anything in Fisher's Peak, uh, we probably won't do anything on that until we have that April meeting with the county, so that we can begin to understand what all is there, and then after that, then we could probably get groups, you get people involved to try to move this forward, and see where it goes from there.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, folks, for showing up.
Just go ahead and take a break.